So I will ask for, to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first selectmen's report.
Actually, Jamie, may I make a comment to amend the agenda before we start?
Okay.
All, I was just thinking, I would like to have us have a conversation about public comment and to see how we may want to implement it in a more standardized way.
That's a fantastic idea. That's fine with me. You're moving to amend the agenda?
I'm moving to amend the agenda to include discussion and possibly take action regarding public comment at board selection meetings.
Okay.
Do you need a second?
I'll need a second.
I would second that.
Okay. All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. So why don't we add that as the second item of new business? Okay?
Okay.
All right. First selectmen's report. I want to thank Chief Anderson for representing the town of Darien and the Darien Police Department so well through his participation on the NAACP Task Force for Peace Public Town Hall Panel that took place on Tuesday, June 30th. I'd like to draw the public's attention to the Darien Police Department's website, where you will find a statement by Chief Anderson on the missions and values of the Darien Police Department. You'll also find a document on where the Darien Police Department stands on the eighth that can't wait tenants of the Campaign Zero Initiative, and a comprehensive FAQs document that's a compilation of the many questions the department has received since the murder of George Floyd and their calls for police reform. I have asked Kate to attach those three documents to our minutes for the public. The town is partnering with the YWCA of Darien Norwalk and the Darien Library for a program called Waking Up White: A Conversation on Bias, Privilege, and Racism on Monday, July 13th from 5:00 to 6:30. We encourage you to participate by registering either with the YWCA or the Darien Library. On June 29th, the State Department of Education released their Adapt, Advance, Achieve: Connecticut's Plan to Learn and Grow, which is a roadmap for school district reopenings in the fall. Districts are tasked with drafting their own local plans with some common elements, and those plans will be submitted to the State Department of Education for approval by the end of July. You can find the state's plan on the State of Connecticut website and also on the Town of Darien website under State COVID Resources. It's anticipated that the Connecticut Legislature will be called into special session this month to address police accountability and absentee ballot legislation. There's also a proposal for legislation to change zoning regulations, which may also be pushed through this special session. I will be attending a meeting tomorrow, and we'll get more details about exactly what those changes are that are being proposed. The approved 2020-2021 capital budget supports the state mandated Affordable Housing Plan that's due by mid-2022. Discussions have begun with the Department of Housing to gain clarity over what should be in the plan, as it was not detailed in the legislation that mandated it. The Department of Housing has hired an organization called RPA as the consultant to determine the planned content requirements. RPA guidance is due by November of 2020. The Planning and Zoning Commission will likely hire a consultant to assist with the drafting of our local affordable housing plan. The process should take approximately 10 months and will be completed well in advance of the mandated deadline. The Board of Selectmen received several emails, as you know, this weekend and today outlining concerns that arose from crowded beaches this holiday weekend. The Parks and Recreation Commission sets park and beach policy, and we encourage you to reach out to them with your questions. All emails received by the Board of Selectmen have been forwarded to the Commission and the department head. Aquarion has communicated that their reservoir system has hit our first drought trigger and will likely hit the second drought trigger this week. They're asking for voluntary 20% reduction in consumption. Aquarion is out enforcing the twice-per-week irrigation mandate. Customers must apply for waivers for new plantings or for large lawns. More information can be found on their website at aquariumwater.com. The parking areas and walking path have been completed at Highland Farms. We're waiting signs before the space will be open to the public. Letters have been mailed to abutting neighbors on when they can meet with our consultant to offer input on our landscaping plan. Once the plan is complete, we'll price it out and seek funding approval. In spite of continued positive COVID-19 trends in Connecticut, this afternoon Governor Lamont decided to postpone Phase 3 of the reopen Connecticut Plan, which was set to begin on July 20th. The postponement is out of an abundance of caution, given the spikes in virus transmission in other parts of the country. No new Phase 3 date has yet been set. Private gatherings will remain capped at 25 people inside and 100 people outside. Bars will remain closed. Indoor dining at restaurants will remain at 50% capacity, and gyms and entertainment venues will remain limited to 25% capacity. The Department of Public Health for the State of Connecticut will no longer be providing COVID case updates over the weekend. Monday data will include all cases that have been accumulated from Thursday night through Sunday evenings. And a snapshot of where we are here in Darien is we have 210 cases, 110 of those male, 100 female. Still, thankfully, only 16 hospitalizations, five deaths, and 10 cases from our assisted living facilities. And I thought I'd give you a little bit of an age breakdown, so you can see how the demographics map out. 0 to 9 age category, four cases. 10 to 19, 14 cases. 20 to 29, 21 cases. 30 to 39, 20 cases. 40 to 49, 38 cases. 50 to 59, 55 cases. 60 to 69, 25 cases. 70 to 79, 16 cases. 80 to 89, 13 cases, and 90 and over, four cases. So it's really, it's really my age group that has been the most dramatically affected. But the older folks get it much more seriously, so that's a great concern. I want to thank our community for doing all the right things to stop the spread of the virus. Wear your masks, wash your hands, don't gather in large groups, and be mindful of the health of others. Thank you. Kate?
We did reopen walk-ins for the collection of taxes last week on July 1st. People jumped the gun, and they were here on June 28th. But we do accept walk-ins for the purpose of paying taxes between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM before 10:00 AM in Room 119. We are working on when we will reopen fully to the public. I've sent some questions and comments to Ed Gentile and Anthony Campanella, our facility supervisor, for them to consider regarding protections we'll need. We also have a meeting scheduled for later this week to meet with the senior center director to discuss what we'll need to do in preparation for reopening the senior center. We don't have any dates for any of that, but we are planning because some things we know will take quite a bit of time to get done. And it's the new year for us, so you'll start seeing things happening with capital projects.
Okay, thank you. All right, first order of business is to receive the annual report from the Board of Ethics, which is in your packet. It's a short report, so I will read it to you. This is from Tom Moore, the chairman of the Board of Ethics. As required under Article 5 of the Code of Ethics, the Board of Ethics will report to the Board of Selectmen actions taken by the Board. The Board of Ethics has not received any complaints for 2019 and to the date of this report. Furthermore, the Board of Ethics has not been requested to provide advisory opinion. Should the Board of Ethics receive a request for advisory opinion or complaint, a meeting would be scheduled to review the request for advisory opinion and/or complaint. Regards, Tom Moore, Chairman. And that was provided to us on June 24th, 2020. So we're going through, Linda is going through our, our information in our office and putting together a chart so that we can make sure that we keep good track of when all the annual reports are due from various bodies, so we can make sure that we're staying on schedule. Okay, and our new item of business that we added is discussion on public comment. Thank you, Krista, for bringing this up. I know it's been a topic of interest for the last couple of weeks. What I'd like to say is I'm prepared to have a discussion about it. I'm not prepared to take a vote on any action today. So I will offer, just as a conversation starter, about public comment. You know, having discussed this issue with town council, that a frequently misunderstood notion is that for boards like ours, public comment is not the same as a public hearing. And there's actually no right for public comment in a public meeting. It is up to the discretion of the board and the chairman specifically. It's been a longstanding practice, though, that this board allows for public comment, and I strongly recommend that we continue doing so. So I, I'll bring up for your comment.
I guess my thoughts were, one, I very much appreciate that this body does have public comment. I came from a board where, for many years, we did not have public comment, and I thought that was doing a disservice to the community. Reiterating, though, public comment is the ability for the public to comment and not engage in dialogue. That is not the purpose of public comment, and I think everyone whom we hear from has been respectful of that. It really jumped out at me when I look, I'd like to see a, well, first, when we get back to hopefully normal conditions where we may have the public attend with us, I don't think it's an issue. Right now, we have sort of a hybrid situation where people can come in and dial in or submit written testimony. And I just wanted to clarify and sort of tighten up what, how we could help the public with their expectations as to what happens in that scenario. Right now, our agenda says email comments may be read aloud at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. I wasn't quite sure how that would actually play out, whether we would vote on each comment. We'd vote depending upon time, and I don't think that, I don't ever want time to be a factor in whether or not we hear from the public. So my, what I would like to see is continuing the practice we have of public comment to be submitted in writing and contained in the minutes that we publish on our website, or they have the option, of course, to participate remotely through GoToMeeting, which Kate has been genius at doing so. I personally do not like the idea of comments being read by someone other than the author of comments. I feel like there's too much tone and inflection can go into the reading of someone else's document, so I personally am not comfortable with that. But what I'd like to see, at least acknowledging the letter writer by name and by address, which they'd be stating anyway if they came in person, so we can acknowledge their contribution, and people can always go to the website to see the written comment. So that's sort of what I was thinking, and...
So it was your suggestion to say we've received public comments from so-and-so-and-so-and-so-and-so in lieu of reading them, and then these will be posted to our website?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And the address, their names and address, both of which, because they need to be Darien residents to speak to us, if they choose not to participate live in the call-in.
I think it'd be great to have a policy around it. I think we have had some limited public comment in the past. We've been able to read it, like we had one from, during the budget cycle, we did have some public comment. I think it would be very effective to have something that's very clear to everyone.
Right.
I, if we don't have that many, I would, would be great if we could read it, but I do understand that there is a concern about inflection, but I do, would love if we had one or two, if they could be read. But if we do have many, I do think at least listing their names and addresses and then saying we'd be posting them. The question I have is, would they be posted then for minutes? Do we then need to wait until the next meeting, until those minutes are approved, before they're posted? Should we post them immediately? Like, how quickly would that be done?
Kate?
So we try to post the minutes as soon as we have them in draft form, as soon as we receive them and edited them, and we try and get that turned around pretty quickly. We can do it faster. You know, we post the votes in the office. We can have the written comments or the email comments available in the same places that the votes, so that anybody coming in would be able to see, see what, you know, what people have now in.
Do draft minutes have to be posted within 48 hours, 24? There's a legal requirement on when draft minutes?
No, well, there is, yes, yes and no. So if you post your votes within 24 hours, you have a week to post your minutes. So if you don't post the votes, that's why we post the votes right away.
Right.
So if you don't post the votes, then you do have to get the minutes, and I believe it's 24 or 48 hours, but you get longer if you do post the votes.
Oh, I see, as a first step. Okay, well, we could, I mean, you could put the comments, because we're not editing those, we're not...
We're not voting on them.
We're not voting on them, or we're not changing them.
You could just, you know, put them right in the same spot where the votes are, and anybody wanting to come in and see them could access them.
Yep. And we would always send them, if media made an inquiry about comments that were presented to us, we would provide them immediately. I support that. I support trying to hold the process to, especially in the strange time, as much like it would be in person. I don't favor reading someone else's letter into the record at all. First of all, you haven't timed it, you know, to know that it would fit within the time parameters. We give people, you know, two or three minutes, two minutes if we have a lot of people making public comment, and I would never want to be held responsible for emphasizing something in one way or not emphasizing something appropriately. So given that we have this technology and people can participate in person virtually if they wish to, I think that's a great, a great option. So I support your recommendation, Krista.
And I haven't seen any other body that reads minutes, I mean, reads public comment. Not that, I mean, I don't watch all of the meetings, but I haven't noticed any other body do that.
And legally, they don't have to be read into the record?
Right. Legally, we don't even have to accept them. I mean, we don't even have to...
That's correct.
But do you think, you know, we've had a long record of doing it, and I think in the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Transparency, I think it'd be great to post.
Yes, I would agree. David, Kip, do you have any comments on this?
I feel strongly that if someone wants to be, make a public comment, and we're back to normal, they'll be here, they'll stand up, and they'll speak. Today, if they want to make a public comment, they can do it through the electronic version of speaking. If they want to write something in, that's fine, but we're not going to read what they write into the minutes for all the reasons you've mentioned. I mean, we'll have it, we'll have it in the minutes, but not going to read it out loud at the meeting. It makes no sense. I mean, if you want to speak up, you can do it either remotely now or in person. Okay? We've never, we've never had a policy of reading comments that come in at a public meeting, at our Board of Selectmen meeting.
Correct.
And if you can post them right away, that's fine. I mean, that gets the immediacy out there, correct?
When I say post, I don't mean on the web. They're available to the public, but that raises an issue right now, where the public can't come in. Maybe we should just post on the web the next day the votes and the comments.
Okay.
As long as it indicates draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, I support that, Kate. That is their access at the moment.
Correct.
David, any comments?
No, I think Krista outlined a good approach, honestly. It's clear, it's consistent, it's applied consistently across the board, and encourages public participation and openness, which I think is the right way.
Okay, good, and we're all in agreement. All right. Thank you. We'll move on to parking authority business. Discuss and take action on a request to locate the COVID testing site in the rear of the Leroy West parking lot. So as you know, there's more activities that are beginning to happen at the Darien High School, and it would be, I'm sure, beneficial for the district if we found a new location. So we're very limited in where we can put a testing site, as you probably know. So the one place that comes to mind, taking advantage of the fact that folks are not commuting right now, is the back of the Leroy West parking lot, which, this is a picture of it. And what we're recommending is that the, in order to make sure that the testing tent is as far away as possible from the adjacent homes on Old Stone Road, putting the tent in the center, back, two-thirds of the way back, so that as you enter and you can pull up to the tent, two cars can stage on either side of the tent, so they can probably do, test more people in a shorter period of time. We can always make adjustments to the location of that tent. Kip, can you see where it is?
I'm looking at the one we had last, last meeting about what the...
Alternative.
What?
Not, not the same, not as far back as that.
Yeah, it's not quite as far back.
Oh, I was imagining the same place also.
Yeah, because if you, if you look at the map, the further, if you go into the very back section of the lot, there's two challenges with that area. Number one, it's closer to the homes, and number, not that that's an issue, it's not an issue at all, actually, but in order to give people the greatest peace of mind. And also, Metro North utilizes that area to get to the train tracks, so if, you know, we, I think it would be better to stay out of any of that activity. But we can start here, and, you know, at any point in time, we can move it. So I would like to get your, your thoughts on this. If, if everyone agrees, we can be ready to be operational again this Friday, which I would love to do. I think people are eager to take advantage of testing.
So the railroad use of the property in the back is not, we're not going with that one?
Correct.
No.
Okay.
We likely will have another proposal on that.
Okay, but not there?
But not here.
Okay.
That's all I know.
Has Murphy Medical seen this proposal, and do they have any thoughts? Yes, they're, they're very happy with the new location.
Okay.
And it would all be subject to, you know, as soon as people need to go back into work and start commuting, then, you know, we would have to make a different decision.
Can we put some signage up with that? I know the high school was very easy, everyone knows where the high school is. That particular location may or not...
Yep, we'll publish the address, which was kind of hard to find. I didn't...
Yeah, I bet.
But we'll publish the address, yeah.
Maybe the lot's hard to find.
Does anyone have any other questions or concerns about that location? No? We did notify all the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, and we only received one, the Health Department received only one comment back, asking that it's located as far away from the homes as possible. Okay, so then I would like to, I'd like to read this motion, but I'm going to ask to amend it as written, and I'll read what my intention is. The motion reads, "The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Darien, acting as the parking authority, hereby grants permission to the Town of Darien to locate a drive-through COVID testing site in the rear section of the Leroy West parking lot." And I'd like to add, "Until such time as the parking lot is needed to accommodate commuters." So I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved as amended?
Do I have a second? David? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries? Okay, great, thank you.
So that'll be for this Friday, is the plan?
Yes. July 10th. Yep. Okay, so another standing item we're going to have on our agenda is a place where everyone who is a liaison to another agency in town or another board or commission can give an update or comments on, on your participation. So, you know, Kip with the School Building Committee, David with Blight, Sarah with Driving Youth, and Krista with Pear Tree, which I think not, not much is going on, actually. So if anyone has a brief report or comments they'd like to give at this time, this is where it will happen in the agenda. So just let me know.
Say Sarah?
Sure.
I mean, I thought you wanted us to do it tonight, right?
I would like you to do it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I think you have the most to report, but I don't, I'm not sure about Blight.
I would agree with that, yes.
I can yield my time.
On June 23rd, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved our application for the new school. There are some conditions, but it's essentially approved. And so with that, we are pretty much through with almost all of the regulatory approvals we need, with the exception of what's called OSTA from the state concerning the traffic intersection of Mansfield and Oxbridge driveway. But that should be no problem. We've completed the design development phase of the project. It was just last week that we had a review of the same with the State Authority for School Construction, which is known as the Office of School Construction, Grant, and Review. It was a four-and-a-half-hour meeting where they went through everything, and basically we're on schedule to keep moving forward, so now we're moving into what's called the construction drawing phase. This is the next phase, almost toward the end, before we still do bidding with contractors, which will probably happen, we have to go through a whole pre-construction review with the state commission again. That'll happen probably late July, early, not, not July, I'm sorry, it happened probably in late August, early September, and the bidding will go out then. The project's been changed in such that the first phase of the construction will now be the construction of the new academic wing, which are classrooms, administrative offices, and of course, mechanical rooms. That will start on November 20th, November of this year, in 2020, probably early November, and by January of '22, in 14 months, it will be concluded. During this period, the existing school will remain totally intact. The original plan was to sort of demolish part of it to make way for this big construction. The answer is no, we're not touching the school until the academic wing is completed. So then around the middle of the year, February break, the children will move over, the students will move over to the academic wing. The existing building will be demolished, and Phase 2 is the construction of what's called the Assembly Wing, which is your cafeteria, your gymnasium, your library, media center, and your music rooms. And that will continue for a period of about 12 months and be finished in November or January, I'd say, at the latest of 2023. At that point, the whole school will be done, with the exception, obviously, of the outside in terms of landscaping and probably some of the parking areas, which will require more seasonable weather to get asphalt in. During this period of time, the early learning program will all be away from Oxbridge. They will return en masse, that is, the entire district early learning program, somewhere in the either early 2023 or for the school season that starts in August of 2023, more likely the latter, because the parking lot will still be, be worked on. Our current cost estimate is $63.9 million. We're $900,000 over our budget, but we continue with value management and looking for ways to bring costs down, and we're going now, after looking at the soft costs, which are over $7 million, to find something there. At the same time, we still have in that $63.9 million, $6.5 million of contingencies, which we haven't used yet, but we don't want to use them now if we can help, because there's always something that's going to happen as you go down the road. We've spent to date, that is, actual payments of $1,482,000, and if you saw all the paper and all the drawings, you understand why, because nothing's been built. So now we're moving into the construction drawing phase. We hope to have that completed within, I would say, about five to six weeks, but then there's a pricing work on that, which takes another three weeks. Then we can state review, and then hopefully go out to bidding. And we think we have some issues we still have to resolve, like where we're going to put some soil and things of that nature, but we're still moving right ahead. And we don't, the big question we had, and I haven't heard the answer, but... And we don't, the big question we had, and I haven't heard the answer back, was, okay, for eligible costs, the state's committed to giving us some support, some money. Is there anything now that's happened at the state level that's going to take that back? We don't know yet. We're waiting for the answer. Everyone says we've never heard it, taking it back. This is never heard times. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Kip. I have a question for you, if you don't mind. In the, when you take down the Assembly Wing and the kids are in the Academic Wing, where do they do their assembly? Where do they lunch and jam?
Well, we have 9,000, we have nine classrooms of 1,000 square feet for ELP. There isn't going to be anybody from ELP there. So, what we're going to do is we're going to probably take two classrooms or three classrooms and turn it into a temporary cafeteria, another two or three to turn it into a temporary gymnasium. And we've already put the costs in the schedule to do that. You've got to give them something, but they're not going to have a kitchen on site, so they're going to have to, but the district has been working on it, figuring out, well, they'll bring food in and all that kind of stuff. But that is part of the cost of this process, yes. That's why the early learning people aren't going to come back until everything's done, because they won't really have their classrooms.
So, you can use their space, yeah?
Yeah, we're going to use their space.
Okay, thank you. David, I'm sorry.
Should be me too.
That was a question?
Not my question, yes.
Yeah. So, there won't be a regular gym, there won't be a regular library, media center. They'll finish one, and there won't be a cafeteria. So, they'll make rooms to do that kind of stuff within that ELP section.
And so, the assumption is for now is that we will still receive the first non-eligible costs unless we hear different?
Right. We've asked the question because, you know, things have really changed, but everyone says, oh, no, no, we never, they never give up. You're right. We'll never, never.
You hold them to that.
This is never.
But it's still limited to the roughly 10%, right?
11, 11.8% of eligible costs, but believe me, eligible costs are not part of that 63. It's a smaller number, and you could count on that. You could count on that.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's where we are.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. If it's at all possible, if you could get us a copy of that, so we can attach it to the minutes, that'd be awesome.
I already gave it to.
Perfect.
I wrote it out and gave it to.
Anybody else have a report from your committee or agency? No updates?
We've been having our first meeting since the prior briefing last night.
Oh, perfect.
Next time.
Okay, next time. Okay, we have some transfers. First transfer is for $4,629 from the Board of Finance Reserve to the cafeteria expansion, and I believe this is to cover an invoice that was, I guess it was, we didn't know that it hadn't been paid.
Correct.
Came to the attention of the chair in June.
It came to the Finance Department in June, and they checked it out and determined that it had not ever been paid, that it was owed, so this will, because the project had been closed down previously, the school allows to pay that bill.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this? I'm just curious, do you know who the vendor was, Kate? Do you recall?
I did, but...
No worries. Any other questions on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
So moved.
All those, may I have a second? Sarah, seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. The next transfer is for $6,024 from part-time salary to full-time salary in the Building Department. Kate, would you want to talk about this?
This is fiscal '21, this is your first fiscal '21 transfer. Our Assistant Building Inspector, from the time we hired him, has actually not been available to us for 35 hours a week. He's been able to work 32 hours a week for us. Come October, he will be able to work 35 hours. He has employment elsewhere, and that's, you know, what the conflict was. And the Building Inspector would like to take advantage of it. We would delay hiring a second part-time inspector until, we're not quite sure, but we've had difficulty finding a second part-time Building Inspector, so the three hours a week additional week you get from Mike will be very useful in helping the continuity of inspections with the new projects before us.
Do we think that we can avoid the hiring of the additional part-time inspector with this?
I haven't had that discussion with Pete of late. I don't think we're going to be able to avoid it, but depend, some might depend on when Palmer's restarts. I think they've been slow there. Mike fears more that we can't get somebody willing to take a part-time job, that we would have to hire somebody on a full-time basis, but not retain them for more than a year or so, because we won't, our expectation is, once these projects are all done, that the workload will decrease in the Building Department, and we wouldn't need them.
Is, Mr. Beatty works 32 hours, you don't consider that a part-time position?
We do not.
Okay.
Thirty, in the town hall reunion, which he's part of, full-time's 30 hours.
Okay, so the point is that you have another part-time person right now?
We got one part-time person right now.
Right, okay.
Any other questions about this transfer? I think it's going to be great to get Mike, you know, those extra three hours a week. He's a very well-respected inspector, so I think it's, I support this. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the transfer of $6,024 to full-time salary in Buildings Department?
So moved.
David, thank you, may I have a second? Sarah? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, we have some appointments this evening. And before we get to the appointments, if anyone is watching on Channel 79 and you desire to volunteer for the town, we would love to get more members of the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission. They do great work for the town, but we need some extra folks to help on that committee. So, we have, we're taking up the reappointment of Sue Ann Shore to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term ending November 30, 2021. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Kip, may I have a second? Sarah? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We have the reappointment of James Long to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term ending on November 30, 2022. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Kip moves, may I have a second? Krista, seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
May I just ask a question here? Why the difference in the term ending?
Good question. That's probably just when their original, they're three-year terms, so it's based on when their original term ended. We sometimes have trouble getting people scheduled for their reappointment.
I know Sue Ann, we had tried to get her in a while ago, so I remember her name had been...
She could have been a year overdue.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and we have an appointment of Brent Hayes to the Police Commission for a term ending on June 30, 2022, and I'd like to just amend this because it is subject to a positive background check, which we do for our police commissioners. We started that practice with the appointment of Commissioner Cunningham, and so, subject to that background check, I'll ask for a motion to approve Brent as our new Police Commissioner to fill the vacancy.
So moved.
Thank you. Kip, may I have a second? Second? Krista, seconds? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we have minutes of our regular meeting of June 22.
I have Kip and David's amendments.
I didn't see Kip's.
I didn't see Kip's.
Kip's were mostly, were spelling in capitalizations.
Very big issues.
And the two extra periods on page two?
The inaudible that I...
The inaudible, it was the inaudible I had to say. I guess it was a police commission.
Yeah.
Hopefully, one of the gentlemen caught the two extra periods on page two.
Oh, no.
No.
Yes, Ms. Stevens, another for the Department of COVID-19, sounds like that.
Hate to get that picky, but... All right, are there any further edits? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve as amended? And you did note that all of the public comments were attached to these minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, Kip moves, David, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Great. Okay, I believe that we have, we have two public comments, one individual who's going to provide public comment in person, but virtually, and we have also received a letter from Rob Richards of Five Edmund Street that we will be adding to our public record. Okay, Yvonne, can you hear me?
Yvonne? Yes, hi, good evening.
Go ahead.
My name is Yvonne Klein. I live at 19 South Lock Lane, and I'm making comments tonight as private citizens in the Town of Darien. Having served as first election and having implemented public comments after years of its absence, I understand the challenges, the opportunities, the legal obligations, as well as the distinction that the Board of Selectmen is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting or a public hearing. And that's why I'm speaking to you this evening, to encourage the members of the Board of Selectmen to allow for and identify a clear process by which citizens can provide public comments. Today, we are faced with so many important issues that require us to work together as a community. Darien residents have a long history of engagement in trying to do what's best for our town, one that extends beyond partisan politics and welcome participation. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to have a say about issues that are important to them and to be heard, not only by elected officials, but also by their fellow residents. Perhaps last week, I was given, by the last meeting, I was given incorrect information, perhaps it was an oversight, but Darien life problems, the correct information for public comment at this point in time is not easy to find. Public participation in government meetings has changed due to the global pandemic. This is understandable, but it's essential then that any new process, as you began to discuss this evening, can fully explain and accessible to the community. Depending on where you start on the website, it can take anywhere from four to eight clicks to find the Board of Selectmen's agenda, and once there, the instructions are at the bottom of the agenda. However, these instructions were so slightly confused in the 72 edition of the Darien Times, and were later somewhat, some clarity was made by the first election statement, saying that the letters were distributed to the Board of Selectmen, and we will be attached to minutes making them viewable by the public, which you confirmed this evening. So, this is really the first instance we have seen in publicly stated how emails will be handled. And again, we've had a conversation this evening, you know, which will verify or clarify the process further. And it was also this evening that the two-to-three-minute time limit was mentioned. In the same article, the Darien Times reported that the town administrator further explained that she would have read the email that she requested by the board member. I don't have a concern, because I don't know if the selectmen knew or no they could have made that request. For tonight's agenda, emails, comments may be read aloud at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. Again, given the discussion this evening, this statement may be revised in some way. So, of late, we have seen that when residents speak up, they have met, they have been met in a variety of arenas with personal attacks, charges of conspiracy or defiling. I urge the Board of Selectmen to be model of better behavior to create a process that welcomes voices of Darien citizens and values, engagement, especially in this time of uncertainty, knowing that our leaders are willing to respect and actively welcome participation in our democracy should be our standard there. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, agenda review.
I don't know if this is the gender review or, at the time, we have some outstanding nominees for some commissions, both for Police Commission and also for the Commission for the Aging, Commission on Aging, rather. Do you know when those interviews will be set up? Have we set those up yet?
We have not set up the Police Commissioner interviews. We'll do that now that we've filled this vacancy, as I promised that we would. Linda goes down the list all the time for the other nominations that we've received, trying to schedule them out in a way that we can handle. And as I've mentioned in the past, if we end up with a number of people that we want to interview, not just two or three before a regular meeting, we can hold a special meeting so that we can take care of a number of interviews. That might be more efficient for us to do that. So, I'm happy to keep bringing them forward and set up a time for us to, to address the outstanding nominations for the Police Commissioner term that ended on June 30.
That'd be great. I know we had a couple, I was thinking of, we had someone on the agenda a few months ago, Carla Thompson, for the Commission on Aging. So, I know there was some time on which we couldn't do the executive session, so...
Right, yep. Round those out. And along the same lines of finding people for these commissions, is it possible to put something, I like to say it, on the website?
It's not a bad idea. Not to add to the website work. I realize it's not an easy topic, but just to, I mean, we've heard about Monuments and Ceremonies needing more people. Is that possible?
Absolutely possible. It's just a matter of where you put it that people see it, because we have a limited number of news items that we can put on the front page, and I wouldn't rank this up as something that needs to be there.
Could we, could we ask our web provider if there was some way under, under the Government tab to add a place for volunteer opportunities?
Yeah, I would love to see that.
That's a great idea. Do we have a number of vacancies on commissions or...
We always do. It's always rolling.
I'm wondering if we could...
You can also maybe, how do I?
Yeah.
Do a thing instead of volunteer.
Volunteer, I love that.
And maybe what we can do is ask Linda to create a document that she can link to it to show where we have vacancies.
That's a fantastic idea.
Right. And what we need, you know, to be in compliance with our majority-minority representation. And that way, she can update that document and always have it linked.
Or even as they're coming up, I mean, I would, as we discussed before, I mean, there are unaffiliated voters, there are members of other parties who are not aligned with our two major political parties. I would love to have other members of the public be able to come in, interview.
I think once we get that uniformed.
Yeah, of course, the application.
That there, that makes it, that'll make it easier.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I think that's a great idea.
And we can share them on social media too, also. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, how are we on the application?
Yeah, I think Linda sent it out to the chairman of the two town committees this morning for their comments as well.
That'll be great to have a standardized...
Yeah, I think I set my...
I believe you did. I believe you let us in handling that.
Okay. I think that'd be great. I think that...
I really like that idea, because it wouldn't have to just be for boards and commissions if there's a special task force that, you know, or one of our advisory committees that might need some new volunteers, we can post all those opportunities. Be great. Okay, anything else for agenda review?
We have the gifts coming at some point?
We will, yes. We're not going to forget that, just some other priorities right now.
Absolutely, no, understandable.
I do want to remind you, your next meeting is a daytime meeting.
Oh, yeah, with...
It's Tuesday, the 21st, it's a joint department heads meeting. We'll have it likely at the auditorium, and there'll still be, there are too many to meet the 25-person limit, so we're going to...